Session on June 26, 2024 at 9:00 AM. Projected 2025 employee healthcare rate increase. Our Controller Administrator, Jody Valentino.
Good morning. So each of you has a hard copy and then there is a copy as well on your laptop. Every six months, we get reporting details from our third-party administrator, Advantage Benefits, Jennifer Pedersen, who I believe most of you have met. And Jennifer gives us an idea of where we're at claims-wise, how we're trending for how much is being spent. And all of that obviously impacts what our annual increase will be for our rate for current plans. So basically, P E P M is payment, basically it's how much we're paying per month. So it's our claims per month. So our premiums are up 8.7% compared to last year. Our paid claims year-to-date is very high. It is up 0.246%, 2,140 versus 1,717 per employee per month. So obviously, that's always bad. The more you use it, the more expensive it's going to be later on. We are looking at right now our total utilization for the H R A, the portion that we use to pay for the deductibles and the not co-pays, but you know, you've got $100 for essentially your deductibles, is up 8.7%, which you'll see later on in the COW. That's kind of reflected in there as well. We're roughly the same as we were in 2023 at this time, but it's still trending higher for that. We do have a couple of high claimants. And being that we're a small group, just having two or three high claimants can totally increase the total cost of our usage for health insurance. We have two that are over $50,000 and one that has actually hit the pooling limit where you don't have to pay anything outside of pocket because it's gone so high. So another portion of our expenses is our pharmacy claims. They're actually almost 22% of the total claims that we have made year-to-date. As you flip to the second page, which is page seven, it just kind of gives you a really brief breakdown of our average number of employees, how much we actually paid for each person. So average employees, average member is the total amount of people that are utilizing the benefit, be it a spouse or a significant other or children. So you can see that in 2018, we were at 324. We peaked in 2022 and now we are down to about 338. So we've gone up slightly in the amount of people that are using it. Our paid premiums have gone up very steadily through the years. So that's kind of a stinker thing for us to have to go through. Our medical pay has actually gone up almost $1 million since 2018. So the amount that we are paying out or that Priority is paying out for our medical has gone up from 786,000 to 1,772,000 roughly. So those are pretty big. The other area that you see a huge increase is the pharmacy paid. So in 2018, it was 305,101 dollars for the 2023 year-to-date. And this is the information they use for our newals, 744,979. So more than double since 2018. And that is 2018 is when we first came onto Priority. So our claims as well have more than doubled total to date. So all of those things equal up to basically, we're looking at what they call our med loss ratio. So ideally, if you want to see nothing change for your premiums, you'd want to be somewhere between like 90 to 98% as far as your usage and your med loss. We've had some good years, the first three years that we were with Priority, where we actually didn't see any increases, which was great because our med loss ratio was low. This year, we are trending at about 124%. So when you look at what a med loss ratio is, basically for every dollar, you're going to quote that, so they're losing a dollar on us for everything over $100, in essence is the best way to put it. All of that being said, what that boils down to for Roscommon County Healthcare Benefits is probably roughly a 20% increase in our overall premiums next year. That's with good contact, good history. That's our longevity with Priority Health would be considered in there. Obviously, we won't have that final percentage increase until the end of August. But I wanted to come out early and talk to you guys and let you know we're going to have to start looking at some variations of what we've currently been doing. Some of the things that Noel and I have discussed that we have seen work in other municipalities is they offer kind of a tiered benefits plan. So let's say this is yours, Commissioner Ostrigan likes to say, your Cadillac of benefit packages. So if this is something that an employee would want, they would pay a higher percentage of the premium on a monthly basis. Then we look at offering a next tier. Maybe that's something very similar to what we're doing currently for the Sheriff's Department and P O A M and C O A Ms next door. And then you can offer a third coverage at no cost to the employee where the H R A portion, basically totally different priority package. We talked to, Noel and I talked to Jennifer Pedersen. She is our contact through Advantage Benefits about what it looks like to go out to bid to a different vendor. And really, in this area, you have two choices for health insurance providers, Blue Cross and Priority. So last year, if you remember, we did go to Blue Cross and their plan was nothing like what we currently have. And in addition, for less benefits, it was more of a premium. This year, they won't quote us, our usage is too high. So hands down, no questions asked, the trend that we've had, nobody wants us. If you look through the last couple of pages, just to get a general idea of why why things are so bad, you'll get a look at where we are at as far as the diagnoses and the type of medications that we have. You can have just one or two severe diseases that requires some pretty major surgery and treatments, and that will send us skyrocketing. But this will list like our high claimants on there as well. So you can see like these are some of the, some of those areas. Cancer is obviously one. Anything that has to do with newborn, any kind of birth issues is traditionally one that will send things quite high. When it comes to our pharmaceuticals, there are a few that are quite large. And I will tell you that Priority has actually, they are actually discontinuing a few of these. One of the ones that is a total large amount that I'm sure everybody's heard about is anything that has to do with the weight loss shots. And those obviously are for type 2 diabetes only under our plan. However, you know, it's $1,000 per RX, so you get five people on it. And we actually have a total of 15 claimants that qualify for that and have gone through that process. Those drugs are actually no longer going to be covered by Priority as of next year. So in that issue, it will come down. And that's simply because the pharmaceutical companies that manufacture them are not decreasing the cost that they're charging to people. But you can go through these and you can kind of get an idea of what what is making those things go up. You know, you look at some, you can see our top drugs essentially are for high blood pressure and anxiety. And those are generic, so that's a positive thing, I guess. But I don't know what that tells you about the state of the world today. So essentially, Noel and I are going to start working with Jennifer to come up with a couple of ideas to bring to the board by the end of July for some choices to model a new, kind of new plans for the county and how that looks. Because obviously swallowing a 20% rate increase is not something I'm sure that we can manage. Even if you put a 20% copay onto or a 20% premium buy-in to every employee, you've basically still lost money in the end of the game. There are some ideas that have been brought to me that I will reach out to Jennifer and I will talk to her. I will tell you that she has told me she has two other clients that one actually is receiving a 40% increase for very same factors, municipality similar to ours. And a third client, which is a larger county than us, is looking at roughly a 27% increase. And it's all kind of related to the same, we are aging and usage is just high, and it's been a trend since COVID.
To the end, please. Which brings us to the special assessment district bonding process. Controller Administrator, Jody.
So each of you do have a copy of what I'm going to read on your laptops. So that is available to you to follow along with. So we are to the point where your delegated authority is going to need you to make decisions about financing. And in the decisions about financing, you have a couple of things to consider. So obviously, the total assessment cost is set at $1,275,000. In talking with our delegated authority and our special assessment district team, looking at estimates based on the pre-pays we received for the past three districts assessments and then information that's been collected by our delegated authority as he's been talking to individuals in the assessment district, we are anticipating pre-pays of roughly 30,000 or about 382,000. So that's obviously, you know, putting you down below hopefully a million dollars in potential financing once you get those pre-pays in. And that was Richfield, we had about 32% on the drain district had pre-pays for. There have been numerous meetings through the last year involving the delegated authority, the bonding attorneys, financial advisor, the SAD team, and myself for financial reasons, discussing the process of bonding, bonding versus a loan from the tax payment fund and interest rates and processes that go along with this. So the Board of Commissioners has to now consider whether to proceed with bonding or to authorize a loan to the project from the county tax payment fund. Treasurer Reagan has confirmed that there is currently enough cushion in the tax payment fund to loan money for the Holton Lake Control Structure project through the tax payment fund while still ensuring that her statutory repayments are not affected. So both options would include interest rates at roughly the same percent bonding. So the process of bonding, we have Ben Zinski and Co., who has been here before at a couple of meetings, along with bond attorney Roger Swetts, he's from Dickinson and Wright. And basically, we have talked with them since 2002, when the original planning for repairs and improvements on Holton Lake came about. And then we got into the stall waiting for the special assessment districts to be formed. So the type of bond that we would need to get is actually going to be determined by the status of our delegated authority. This was kind of weird to me, so I just want to point this out to you. So as thinking that it would have been the county, since we pledged the full faith and credit as tax exempt, the IRS actually has a rule that goes off of the person who's responsible for the project, basically. So because we contract with Shepkey Consulting LLC to serve as a delegated authority, the bond that we would have would actually be taxable versus tax exempt. It's not huge, but it does add a higher rate, roughly 1% above what a tax exempt is. And then the current taxable bonds, just so you know, are going for about 6% to 6.7%. The rates are higher because there's actually normally fewer bidders on those. Everybody loves a good government, you know, exempt bond. There are bidders certainly available for the taxable bonds. That was one of my questions. It's just, there's fewer, so it drives it up. Just so you're aware, and in case you didn't see it, when they did the whole presentation, the factors that were included in the special assessment totality of numbers, 27,500 was the cost for bonding cost. And that included the whole process, State of Michigan, fees for attorney, fees for, obviously, you have to go out for bids, et cetera, and all of those that are included in there. In order to bond, it starts with a resolution from the Board of Commissioners that pledges the full faith and credit of the county towards repayment of those. And then we follow right along with the Revised Municipal Finance Act. You apply to the State of Michigan, so they say it's okay for you to bond and you move forward. Tax payment fund, obviously, a contract would then be made between the county and the Roscommon County Treasurer as the overseer of the tax payment fund. Again, you'd be setting your interest rate, probably of what you average the bond would be at, let's say, 6%. You would decrease the tax payment fund, things that go along with that. Obviously, there's, you know, whatever you take out, you have less of in case there is an emergency with some sort of boiler going out, air conditioning falls, roof caves in, or there's some sort of a county disaster and you need cash at hand to assist with like tornado cleanups or something of that nature. The county would retain the interest though, so the 6% that you charge would obviously come back over that three-year period to the county, back into the tax payment fund. The other thing is that obviously funds for Lake St. Helen and Higgins Lake would need to, any drain district projects there wouldn't be available through the tax payment fund until we got a little further along on the repayment of the Holton Lake assessment. We are very close to the drain districts being paid off, and so that's a positive as well. So in my thoughts and talking to our delegated authority and the conversations he and I have had, basically, we're thinking that wait needs to be given fairness to all three projects. Can you loan money to one and not the other two out of the tax payment fund? What is your need for retention for a healthy cash balance? What future expenditures through the tax payment fund related to all three of the lake level control structures? Might you be considering engineering design projects, any type of special surveys or anything that might need to be done, funding for work prior to assessment collections beginning? And then, you know, the cost reduction of the total project by reducing bond expenses. Chase had emailed me, our delegated authority, and he did copy the chair and the vice chair on it this morning and did reiterate, and he'll be here later on for conversation on this, you know, with you one-on-one, he said. But the recommendation from him is to bond all of the projects. And that is to make sure that the tax payment fund remains healthy and that we are equally applying the same rules across the board. The decision on how you're going to proceed with financing really needs to be made no later than the end of July because obviously, our delegated authority has a plan, we can have permits, we can have a special assessment district, but if we don't have cash to pay for it, it's all good and well.
Questions?
Originally, the responsibility for the delegated authority was assigned by the chair in the meetings last year. And is this responsibility that Jody's currently doing, is that assigned by the chair? Is it assigned by the board? Or is it something that's assigned by the delegated authority?
Well, I guess I would respond with two parts. This is obviously money, and my job is money.
Right.
But.
Comes from the board.
When it was set up, it was set up that the administration would handle the financial issues.
Exactly, that's what I was wondering. And so there's obviously, there are separate duties for the process of managing the financing and administrative functions versus taking care of the dam on Holton Lake and the operation of the dam on Holton Lake. Is that correct?
The financial end of it was only because of her vast knowledge of our financial situations.
Exactly, exactly, my point. That's the point I wanted to make. So they were separate functions. I just wanted to make that clear and get that on the record. And originally, the board had assigned the separate duties, the administrative and the maintenance operation of the dams were separate responsibilities. In other words, it was well understood that Jody was going to be taking care of the administration functions and the operation of the dam and so forth. It's all going to be taken care of by the delegated authority. In other words, those functionalities were split out. And again, originally, I want to bring this up again. Originally, we talked about the funding, some of the funding for the special assessment districts to be taken care of, not on a temporary basis, but actually money taken out of the tax fund to pay for that. And Jody brought that up a number of different times to calm the situation down at that particular time. And I just want to make sure that that's clear, that I guess we have decided we're not going to do that. We're not going to take any of the money from the tax fund to permanently pay for some of the things that we're going after bonding, I guess, to pay for, because bonding is going to be paid back for a lot of the special assessment district axes, okay? And so that money is going to be actually reimbursed. But originally, I know we'd all talked, Jody had mentioned that we would not have to reimburse that if we voted as a board to do that. Is that now off the table? I'm asking the chair.
At this time, nothing more has been discussed about it. And from my understanding of where the tax payment fund currently is and what we have going on, yes, it would be off the table unless.
I just want to make that clear to the public and let everybody know we originally had been talking about taking.
We originally talked about, it's a discussion, it was a discussion just like this is.
Exactly, okay, I just want to make that clear, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question for the Controller. The process of prepayment and bonding, we have to get the prepayment committed before we go for the bonding? Or is there a time period, prepayment can happen even after we acquire the bonding? I mean, is there a time period that's interest-free that?
Yes, so that is something that the delegated authority is currently working on right now, sending out prepayment letters. So those will be going out to those residents very shortly. And Chase would have to give you more on the timetable of that, obviously. But that will give us the idea of how much you guys would actually have to bond for so that when the bids go out for bond. So we've got that window of time for prepayments where we can start the whole process of bonding. But when you go out for that final bid, we have to know how much the bond is going to be.
Thank you.
Yes.
I may change my mind, but at this point, I want to be equitable and keep the tax payment fund healthy.
Any other questions?
I agree with that statement, Mark.
I think we knew to proceed with the bonding, but I'd like to move it to the next meeting to approve going with bonding.
I would support that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to agree or disagree, but I just want to make sure that that was thrown out there originally at the time.
Eric, we've already gone over this, we've already gone over it. You already got your answer to your question. You asked it, I answered it.
I'm sorry to upset you, Madam Chair, I just wanted.
You're not upsetting me, I'm just, I'm stating a fact. You asked a question, I answered it. Committee appointments.
Did I miss something or are we skipping number three?
Oh, I'm sorry, attorney representation for new petition, Higgins Lake, save our shoreline discussion of a whole. So my understanding on this is at some point the county is going to want somebody there to, I don't know, represent, if that's the correct term.
So my understanding is, as it's been explained to me, is obviously, at any point in time that somebody petitions on a lake level that the county is in charge of, obviously, we're involved. It doesn't mean that the county has to take a stance, one way or another. But for instance, if there is something that the court determines needs to go to a public hearing, the County Board of Commissioners is responsible through the delegated authority to ensure that all of the information, all of the postings, all of those legalities are taken care of. Additionally, if something were to occur, you'd want to have somebody present to make sure that the county is not being forced into a position that you don't feel represents the best interests of the people. That being said, we don't have, this obviously is not a, is not a coverage by the insurance company. So it would be to the decision of the board to determine if you would like to have attorney representation, when you'd like to have attorney representation, and whom you'd like to have for attorney representation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Until the courts or were petitioned to have involvement, I don't see a need to get involved in this at this moment.
I'll be discussing my points later.
I think at some point, if we need to get, I think that was scheduled for September, if I'm not mistaken. And so I think we just have to be fully aware of what is going on. And at some point, if we have to figure out a representation, an attorney, then we'll have to do that. But at this point, I think it's just more or less information for us to kind of keep in the back of our hat. Now, number four, committee appointments, Michelle Stevenson, Clerk, Register of Deeds.
Thank you. I did each of you with, I will list. So it's current committees that have expired appointments. And we've got one, two, three, four, five, six committees that have expired appointments. We have two members who expired December 31st. And so I had reached out to the airport manager and assistant manager and the chair of that committee available so that they know and they're aware. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, April had resigned in May, so they have one vacancy. Economic Development, Neil actually resigned in May of 2023. They had not filled that vacancy. Wendy and Sean, their terms expired in May. And in speaking with Brenda, it's her understanding they do not wish to be reappointed. Well, Wendy did not want to be reappointed, Sean, she still hadn't heard from at that time. So I have to follow up with her and see if she's gotten any more information on that. We do need some recommendations for that. Recycling Committee, Ron and Scott, they both were, their terms expired at the end of January. So we need to work on that. I did send them emails, asked if they wanted to be reappointed. I had not heard anything from them. Veterans Affairs Committee, Ken and Heath, their terms on that committee expired the end of December of last year. I had spoken with Heath about it, haven't heard any more on that. Tried to reach out to him the other day, was not successful, so I'll have to follow up on that. The Wage and Salary Committee, that is, all appointments expired the end of December of last year. And according to your compensation classification policy, that was adopted in 2019 and effective on January 1, 2020. That's supposed to be an annual appointment that's supposed to be made. So we're a little behind ball on that one. And then we've got upcoming expiring appointments for the E91 Advisory Board. Those are, those two expire in September, the end of September. And Roscommon County Transit Authority, there's three positions that expire at the end of September. Steve is really good with the transit authority about keeping track of that. And he'll reach out and say, yes, these people want to be reappointed. And he'll make sure that he gets that, and we'll follow up with him on that as well. So I just wanted to make you aware that we've got a few vacancies that need to be filled. So I'm trying to reach out to these people unsuccessfully, except for Brenda. She did get back with me on that stuff. And keep you on the loop and trying to get those things done. And keep me on the loop and trying to get those things done. And had some transition in my office and I'm not really sure what happened and how those kind of got, uh, overlooked, but we're going to be working to get that all caught up. So in the near future, I should have several requests for appointments for the board to consider, um, how you want to proceed with the Wage and Salary Committee. I don't really know. That's, so yeah, I've just got to find the people on that one. Um, but I just wanted to make you aware.
Any questions? Thank you. Region nine area agency on aging. Our Controller Administrator, Jody Valentino.
So this is something that we actually receive annually from the area on aging. In 2023, they did come before this board, just to give a brief explanation. They have an annual implementation plan that is rolled out to everybody that is the region nine area agency on aging district. We are included on that. And so essentially what this does is give you a plan that this is how they're going to carry out their statutory requirements and services, how they oversee the commission on agings and the monies that are spent through them. Who sits on this board? I thought so. Commissioner Milburn sits on this board. Um, so this basically, um, it doesn't require any money. It is just for you to review and to, you know, if you so choose to make comments, but they are looking for your approval by July 22nd, 2024 on this plan.
So that would mean at our first July meeting that we would. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Have a question on this. In coming up with all this, did Roscommon County have input on it?
We would have input through our representative that sits on that board. Yes.
I know that I had read that if we had any, um, questions or concerns, we were to email. Do we get with our representative first? Or do we just email the questions? What would be?
I would email directly to Connie, the secretary, so she can get those answered appropriately.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on it? Number six, lake level petition. Commissioner Eric Ostrigan.
We skipped number nine here on aging? Is that what we just went over?
That's what we just went over.
Apologize, I didn't catch that. Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, the issues, uh, these are some issues I think we need to think about regarding Ivan Holden Lake to change the legal level. And by the way, I have hard copies on this that I'll be giving to everybody after I'm done. And anybody else who wants a hard copy can have one. I've been reading posts on Facebook and it's been confirmed that there's a petition drive to change the legal level on Holden Lake. And as a commission, I believe we need to be concerned and we need to do the right thing and be a little proactive to protect the county from potential litigation and public sentiment. I was also informed by our controller that the leader of the petition drive is Dustin, I'm going to mess this name up, Truszulinski. And according to the email correspondence Jody provided all of us, he was given the special assessment district list that includes waterfront property listing with the caveat that we didn't have a listing of specific lakefront property owners. And that was the exact correct response to send. But we need to do more. Here's the problem. The statutes say that in order to ask for a lake level change, two-thirds of the lakefront owners need to provide the commission with. What is the legal definition of what two-thirds of the lakefront owners actually comprised of? There's no case law or attorney general opinion. We don't have such a listing, but we need to get one. It's not our constituents' responsibility to guess who is a lakefront owner and who is not. You can't know what two-thirds of a total number is, uh, what a total number of lakefront owners is if you don't know the total number of eligible lakefront owners. Then every petition needs to be validated. This is an untested area of law. And we need to protect the county in that regard. And that begs the question, what comprises two-thirds of the lakefront owners? This issue was brought before this commission years ago regarding the Higgins Lake, uh, issue resolution. When this commission passed the resolution stating that they would not do anything regarding the maintenance of the LLCs until the commission petitioned by two-thirds of the lakefront owners. Commissioners never sought an answer of what comprises two-thirds. The current petitioners may need to have a comprehensive listing of all eligible lakefront owners, need to have a, a listing so they know what the universe of two-thirds is. If it's not up to the petition to come up with a listing they think is proper, it's up to us. According to our controller, we do not have such a list at this time. The petitioners should ask us for that listing. And if there's a charge to do so, we need to tell them what that charge is. When they submit their listing, they also need to provide us, I believe, with a $10,000, uh, funding as provided by statute. Two-thirds of the lakefront owners, sounds simple, but it isn't. Here's the question. Is two-thirds lakefront owners requirement based upon the amount of lakefront owned? Or is it based on the number of people who own lakefront property? In other words, is it one vote per piece of lakefront property or something else? For example, if one lakefront owner owns 100 feet of lakefront and 10 lakefront owners own, in an association, own 50 foot of lakefront, does the person who owns the 100 feet get one vote and the 10 people who own 50 feet all get one vote? Or is the person who owns 100 feet of lakefront two times, have two times the voting power? Or is it a combination of all these scenarios? There are many more possibilities. These questions have never been answered by any legal authority. And there's no case law on it that I know of. And I know of no lakefront that is, lake, uh, that has ever gone through this process. These questions need to be answered. Otherwise, if we're presented with what the petitioners think two-thirds is, that we will be in a very precarious position because we will need to respond to them regarding their count versus our verified count. As you can see, it could be very confusing and it will be litigated. For the petitions to be valid, the county needs to know exactly how many lakefront owners there are. So a list can be provided to the petitioners. Every single lakefront owner needs to be identified then. Once the petitions are delivered, each petitioner's signature needs to be verified and confirmed that they are the actual owner of the lakefront property. Just what happened with the sewer petitions in Lyon and Gary's Township. The GLA knew every, GLUA knew every single eligible property owner in that process. And the original petition drive opponents unto the sewer project had to start all over again because the petitioners didn't know the rules. Otherwise, when and if the petitions are delivered to us, we won't know if the two-thirds requirement has actually been reached. If we begin legal proceedings without knowing who every eligible lakefront owner is, so the two-thirds requirement can be verified and each signature is validated, those opposed to changing the legal levels may choose to sue us. And I believe they will. If the petitioners bring us a stack of petitions, we just can't look at them and say, hey, that looks like two-thirds or it seems to be two-thirds or anything like that. We need to know exactly what the number is. So, and we need to be proactive. We need to do the work and identify the lakefront owners that have a right to sign the petition if they ask us to. That isn't saying that this is a cost burden the county should pay. It's up to the petitioners to pay us for compiling that listing. That being said, who can provide us with an answer of who is eligible, who is a eligible lakefront property owner? I would suggest that we ask our county prosecutors to request a legal opinion from the attorney general regarding the questions that I raised, or our local and state representatives or senators. To do other word, otherwise may mean malfeasance on our part. We don't need another lawsuit. Also, we owe the folks on Holden Lake a fair shake. Getting ahead of ourselves has always proved detrimental in the past. We don't need to do that again. Also, doing so will not cost us the money of hiring an attorney, as we were talking about earlier. Consider this, it costs the county plenty. When the resolution that was passed back in 2019 that stated that we didn't need to do anything to the LLCs unless two-thirds of the lakefront owners paid $10,000 to fix the LLCs, of course, that resolution was wrong. It was costly to this commission, uh, because they were sued because the legal levels on Higgins were not being maintained properly. The Court of Appeals and Supreme Court agreed. It's been even more costly since that motion, since the motion to stop spending money on the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District until the conclusion of the current Citizens for Higgins Lake League Levels lawsuit issue regarding the lake levels was not passed. That was, there wasn't any support on that motion when it was put forward. It's been costly because the previous commissioner's decision to start the process of developing special assessment districts on all three lakes at the same time. That decision presented by a lawyer with potential profit motive has overwhelmed our resources and is now costing us more than earlier anticipated. And again, it will be costly if we aren't proactive and obtain a legal opinion of what comprises two-thirds of the lakefront owners and supply the petitioners with that information. We need to put much more thought and work into this and we need to be proactive in this matter. I think that getting an opinion from the attorney general or, uh, from the attorney general as soon as possible would be the right thing to do. And it won't cost us anything. Sooner or later, it is going to need to be done. We can do this the hard way or we can do it the easy way. The hard way is that we get sued because we didn't do, uh, we, we did like we did back in 2019 when we didn't get a legal opinion. Petitioners need to know what two-thirds is and the rules need to be established before the game starts. In conclusion, I'd like to say that checkers can be played two ways. You can play that you have to jump or that you don't have to jump, but we establish the rules before the game starts. Those seeking petitions have started the game without knowing the rules and we don't know them either. We owe them the courtesy of telling them what the rules are. And more importantly, we need to know what the rules are. They need to ask us formally that question and we need to get a legal opinion from the AG. I think we owe them and we owe it to ourselves as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, I have some discussion on that.
Okay.
I believe there is attorney general rulings on what is two-thirds of the property owners. And I think there's enough information there in that, that we can proceed with that and so. I believe there is some definitions on two-thirds property owners and stuff issued by the attorney general's office.
Um, the rule, the ruling is, from my understanding, and I have paperwork here in front of me, but the MCL section 324.30702, one of the things that talks about is two-thirds of the owners of lands abutting the inland lake. That's what the petition requires. In that, there's procedures for inland lakes levels under part 307 that is printable that talks about establishing a legal lake level. And in that, they also give examples of the petition to the Board of Commissioners as well as different resolutions. So there's examples from our legislature. From there, there was a Michigan inland water law key concepts and current issues presented to the State of Huron Conference April 2014 by Daniel P. Bach, Assistant Attorney General, Environment, Natural Resources, and Agricultural Division in the Michigan Department of Attorney General. That talks about riparian rights, classifies what a riparian property is, what a litorial property is, how riparian is commonly used to refer to both. A riparian is actual riverfront and litorial actually means lakefront property. Um, riparian applies only to land on contact with natural water bodies or watercourses and does not attach to artificial watercourses such as canals, irrigation districts, et cetera. There's also riparian property rights in Michigan, what they are and how to protect them. So, and then a land title institute course to chapter nine, water rights and related issues, which have plenty of definitions of what it is that you are asking the board to go to an attorney general's opinion on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't think there's any lawyers in here.
None of us are.
And you could have 10 different lawyers.
And you could have 10 different opinions.
Answers. Exactly. That is why I think it's important to get an official ruling on what two-thirds of the lakefront owner is from the attorney general. It won't cost us anything.
This is the Department of Attorney General dated 2014 that talks about what you're just asking.
But.
We're not, we're not.
Copy that, but I, I'm telling you this, there's no case law and it's going to be argued. And I'm just saying, it wouldn't, would not cost us anything. Ask our representatives, if we're going to go, if you want to go ahead and just say, yeah, we're right based on this, that's fine. But that's could still be litigated. What I'm saying is.
You know, anything could be litigated and I don't care if you have an opinion, you know, that could even be.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to drop it before Warren. Okay, before Warren.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I guess my biggest concern, Commissioner Ostrigan, is that even going to the attorney general, getting an opinion and then telling somebody what they have to do. And then what if that goes into court and the court decides or the judge decides that, no, that's not the correct way. I want it done this way. We can still be on the hook because now we've told them to do something and it wasn't correct.
But you're in a much stronger position.
That's your opinion. Yes.
But in the end result, you're waiting for God to review it. I think we can deal with this when the petition comes. There is another avenue way to deal with this without having legalities tied up on us.
Yes.
You know, there was a comment made, the hard way or the easy way. I'd like to do it the right way.
The right way is our easy way.
Any other comments? With no further questions or comments, the meeting would be adjourned until 10 o'clock. I'd like to call the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 26, 2024 at 10 a.m. Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of board members. Milburn. Here. Before we go to the approval of the agenda, I would like to remind all commissioners that the use or communicating with a cell phone while in a public meeting is prohibited. Please either turn your cell phone off, flip it over during the meetings. The same would go for any type of electronic devices. We are not to be communicating or sharing dialogue by any of these commissioners during our meetings. This would be a violation and is strictly forbidden.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think that's not what we should do. But if we're not communicating.
I'm talking about communicating through a cell phone or any type of laptop.
Communicating through any electronic device with any of the commissioners or anybody else for that matter. If we're just looking at our information as it comes in and so forth like that, that is not.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, good. Okay.
Uh, approval of the agenda. Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda before we approve it? I, we also need to add the delegated authority shop key consulting LLC under new business item B.
So, Madam Chair.
Discussion. Roll call. Wilson.
Yes.
Ostrigan.
Yes.
Censor. Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. The items in the consent agenda are the meeting minutes from June twelfth, twenty twenty four board meeting and June twelfth, twenty twenty four lake level control structure meeting. We have correspondences A through I, letters to the Board of Commissioner, MSU, Michigan Health Improvement Alliance and Virotech Outdoors, MAC legislation updates, resolutions from Genesee and Crawford Counties, the Roscommon DHHS Board expense reports, inner local government agreement with Crawford County and our monthly department reports from our controller to the board. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion. So, as per second.
Second.
Roll call please. Melbourne.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Public comment. Before we have public comment, I would like to remind everyone that public comment is just that. It's not a Q and A. If anyone has a question that they would like answered, please email that question to Chair or Vice Chair. I can, we can answer in an email, phone call, one on one, or if you would like it addressed in a meeting, we will put it under unfinished business. Only questions that are emailed will receive responses. Is there any public comment? Yes.
The chairman, the chair, the chairperson will address you at that time. You got about fifteen minutes.
No.
Until your time. Not fifteen minutes, not fifteen minutes.
No, visitors is next. So now we have visitors. Bill Tudor. Now you get to come up. Yes.
Standby. Okay. Just wanna say good morning and I wanna say that it's considered a privilege to get to sit here as a citizen of Roscommon County. It's really simple story. I suffer from traumatic brain injury, PTSD, hearing loss and tinnitus. I was diagnosed with all of it before I mustered out of the Marine Corps in nineteen eighty four. My life turned into a train wreck. After coming back from ground zero, I got so sick, I literally died on the way to Midland Hospital in twenty sixteen. I walked out of the hospital alive. I breathed too much dust at ground zero. We didn't have respirators when I got there. We had paper masks. We got one man out alive. After I died but didn't, I went through a vicious divorce. PTSD. For any veteran, you either deal with it when you get out or you deal with it thirty years later after failed marriages. If it hadn't been for the Roscommon County veterans and my church elders, the story would have went way different. As a direct result, the monies and resources that were provided through this county, through the veterans, that helped me, first of all, they stabilized me with housing. They provided food, toiletries, but not just that, guidance and counseling. Keith Neemeth, Mark Milburn, all the veterans at the coffee hour once a month up at the Blatchett County Memorial Airport. Being able, ready and willing to listen to the older and my church elder and the folks that were guiding me, helped me to restore my health. I got back in my trade union. I did two and a half years on the Gordy How Bridge. They called me out of retirement. My strength came back, my thinking got straight, being clean and sober with the encouragement. It takes a village to raise a kid, right? Well, I was an adult kid because of arrested development. But I'm here to say that the resources that got provided for, for me like eight years ago was money well spent and I'm here to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. My service dog, Bellinay, we are grateful. My God, the God fearing woman in my life right now, she's grateful. Everybody who wanders is not lost. JR Tulkey said that. There's always an underlying reason. All behavior can be explained, but it takes patience and tolerance. And if I hadn't received that kind of true love from the whole village in Roscommon County, this story would have been horrible. I could be dead right now. Instead, I just come off the job on Mackinac Island where God gave me the strength and skills to restore the columns with antique carpentry that I didn't even know I knew how to do. And we just came back from a visit up there. The Veterans Administration has resources. The Veteran Career Advisors and it's connected with the state somehow. They helped me. Um, and I got to, I was, I'm humble and grateful that now I'm a part of the Grand Hotel's rich history. And while I was there over the winter, I got to represent Roscommon County and the Roscommon County veterans. So I guess what I'm trying to say is thank you very much. And if there are resources available in the future to help somebody, it's money well spent. Every day, twenty five veterans commit suicide. If we can reach them with this story so that they can see that if God and the veterans in Roscommon County can help me, can help anyone because I was the worst in my opinion. So I'm just trying to make us, make the people that have invested time, love and money proud of me because it's my responsibility to the people that have put out these concerted efforts to live my best life. That's all I got to say is thank you and, and and I'm humble and grateful.
Thank you.
And thank God for your service and thank you, Mark, for all the things that you do for the vets.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. We don't have anything listed, so we are on to new business. Michelle Stevenson, Clerk Register of Deeds Report.
Yeah. Okay, it's only three pages. They're little. Okay, um, so I was asked if I would be interested in giving clerk report at meetings. Sure, why not? Okay. Well, I don't think I said it that quickly or easily, but there was. Um, anyway, so just to give you an update, um, the ballots for the August sixth primary have been delivered to the townships and sample ballots are available at the townships and the county clerk's office. So we do have sample ballots available for each precinct. Early voting will be available July twenty seventh through August fourth at the designated early voting sites. Roscommon County has seven sites available. I'm currently in the process, excuse me, of creating brochures for the townships to provide voter, to provide for their voters regarding early voting information. That's something that is going to be funded through the early voting grant through the state. We're working on, I'm gonna bounce back and forth a little bit here, but we're also working on getting the juror questionnaires ready for the jury board who will be convening July fifteenth through the seventeenth. We sent out three thousand questionnaires, which is what we do annually to potential jurors to serve in Roscommon County. We've done two mailings and we currently still have three hundred and ninety five outstanding. Generally, the next step is to show cause those people who have not returned them. So that's all at the discretion of the Chief Judge. Um, the ordinance numbering correction that I presented to you previously, I'm working with the prosecutor on a resolution for that. He had intended to get me something before he left. But he did not for vacation and so hopefully I'll have something for you at the next meeting regarding that and how we can proceed. Back to elections. Uh, all ballots, just for clarification, all ballots that are issued for an election are issued by the city and township clerks. They're not issued by the county. The only time a county would be in charge of issuing those is if any of those counties are running the early voting sites. That's the only time a county would issue ballots. So otherwise, all AV and Election Day ballots are issued by the township and city clerks. We do not have city clerks here. Just a reminder that voters do need to be proactive when it comes to voting absentee. If they've requested an AV ballot and do not receive it in a timely manner, they should contact their clerk. There were several issues with the clerks not receiving applications for ballots with the February election. This occurred statewide. There was issues that, it happened so much that the Bureau of Elections has now created a department to work with USPS to try to resolve these issues. I had several clerks after the February election that received the applications two weeks later and they were postmarked in March. So where they went, I don't know where, I don't know. So as it gets closer to the election, if people have requested, if they've sent in an application to get a ballot and if they've not received it, they need to reach out to their clerk as soon as possible. Or they can participate in early voting for the nine days, but don't wait until Election Day and then be mad because you didn't get your ballot. You still have to, they still have to be responsible. Our minutes project update, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Currently I have Colleen set up to scan minutes, so she'll begin creating files on her computer. So she, Andy came in and hooked up the scanner for her and she can go in and scan our newer books because we can pop those pages out and they're eight and a half by fourteen. So, and she can create, um, scan those and create Tiff files for those and save those in separate folders. So I'm just gonna have her work on that until US imaging comes in. So we'll be saving some money in our costs with US imaging on that. Back to elections again. I'll be holding an election inspector certification class in July. This is something that is required before each election. And if the clerks need someone to be certified, so I always have to provide that. And currently I have one class scheduled that was with about forty five participants. But that was also only with five townships responding to my initial email. And as I sent out the class date, now I'm getting more names and numbers, so I may end up having to conduct a second training for that. Just so. I don't have a hundred people in one room. Any questions for me?
Yes. On the jury list, at what age can a person opt out to be an jury?
Seventy. But you have to be seventy at that time. When we send the questionnaires out in April, whenever we get the list from the Secretary of State, we send the questionnaires out and then the jury board convenes either in July or August to qualify jurors for the new jury year, which is October one through September thirty. And so if you're not seventy yet, but you're going to be seventy, you are not allowed to be permanently excused until after you are actually seventy. So if you get a summons, you still have to return your questionnaire. And then if you do receive a summons and you are seventy, you can at that time just request to be permanently. It's amazing how many people are over seventy that still fill out the questionnaire. Yes, they want to serve until they get a summons and then they don't want to serve because they're over seventy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our delegated authority Shepkey Consulting, is he on?
And Chair, would you like me to comment on that?
He's supposed to be on Zoom.
He's not there.
Yeah.
Here I am. No, I'm here.
Here it is.
Yep, one let me unmute. All right. I wanted, I sent all you guys the St. Helen roll. I just wanted to give you an update on where that was going. We're using all the similar factors that were used on Holton Lake. The only thing different is that there is a recreational factor for the hunting rights over the lake. That is gonna be probably the major difference between the two lakes. Otherwise, everything is done differently. It will be a two-year assessment and so a front lot is gonna be paying between a hundred and forty and a hundred and sixty dollars a year for two years for that assessment based on how things change as factors change as we go through, but it should be between there. So that, that means a back lot five would be paying seventy to eighty dollars a year for two years.
These are tentative figures, correct?
These are tentative figures, yes.
Question?
Yep.
There, uh, this is for Lake St. Helen and you mentioned some numbers. Is this for the new dam project or just for setting up this district?
This is identical to Holton Lake. This is for setting up the district. All the anticipated work over the next two years and for the engineering fees.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
We are now on the motions and resolutions. On number five, um, there should be a correction in the first sentence whereas the word its would be taken out and it should read duty is to protect. So whenever the clerk is ready.
Motion number one, move to amend the, amend the previously approved contract with Shepkey, Shepkey Consulting LLC for delegated authority services to increase the hourly rate of pay from seventy five dollars to one hundred and twenty five dollars per hour.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Melbourne.
No.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number two, move to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero six dash zero two County Approval Agency Materials Management Planning. County Approval Agency Materials Management Planning. Whereas the state of Michigan's Solid Waste Program was updated with significant amendments to part one fifteen Solid Waste Management of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety four PA four fifty one in December two thousand twenty two and became effective on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three. And whereas the amendments include a new materials management planning process that requires each county to develop a materials management plan. And whereas the county of Roscommon Board of Commissioners, through majority support of its townships, has elected to assume the responsibility of becoming the county approval agency. And whereas the county of Roscommon Board of Commissioners has determined that it is in the interest of the county to elect to assume the responsibility of becoming the county approval agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the county of Roscommon Board of Commissioners hereby elects to assume the responsibility of becoming the county approval agency and appoints Commissioner Rex Wolfson to serve as county point of contact for the purposes of material management planning.
The move.
Second.
You jumped there. I'm crazy.
Discussion.
Yes. Do I need to abstain from this?
No.
I apologize. I didn't hear your question, Rex.
Do I need to abstain from voting on this?
Name's in it, so you need to vote.
Name's in it, so you need to vote.
I think it'll pass anyway, Rex. No problem.
And also be aware, we're gonna file a letter of intent. And should we not be able to proceed further from that, we're just not gonna be able to proceed. But I'll have more information on that in my report.
Roll call.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Melbourne. Yes.
Resolution adopted. Motion number three, move to approve the inter-local governmental agreement with the Crawford County Housing Department for the purpose of facilitating the administration of Ross Common County's Community Development Lot Grant Program Income. PI, emergency housing grants available through Ross Common County for a fee of seven thousand dollars annually or eighteen percent of collected CBVG program income per program year, whichever is greater.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Wolfson. Motion carries. Motion number four, move to approve the Public Safety Communications System amended and restated integration agreement which amends and replaces the June twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen integration agreement between the State of Michigan Department of Technology, Management and Budget Office of the Michigan's Public Safety Communications System, DTMB MPSCS and Ross Common County E nine one one.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number five. Move to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero six dash zero three Resolution Submitting to a Vote of the Electorate and Emergency Management Operations Milage. Whereas the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners' duty is to protect communities by coordinating and integrating all activities necessary to build, sustain and improve the capability to mitigate against, prepare for, respond to and recover from threatened or actual natural disasters, acts of terrorism or other man-made disasters. And whereas Act three ninety of nineteen seventy-six allows for the appointment of a county emergency management coordinator to act on behalf of the County Board of Commissioners for the purposes of directing and coordinating the development of emergency operations plans and programs in accordance with the policies and plans established by the appropriate federal and state agencies and to sign and make available for duty the employees, property or equipment of the county or municipality relating to firefighting, engineering, rescue, health, medical or related services, police, transportation, construction and similar items or service for disaster relief purposes within or without the physical limits of the county. And therefore, the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes that the following Emergency Management Operations Milage be placed on the November seventh, two thousand twenty-four ballot for review and vote of people. Ross Common County Emergency Management Operations Milage shall limitation upon the total amount of general ad valorem taxes which may be levied upon all real and personal property for all purposes in any one year under the Michigan Constitution be increased in the County of Ross Common, Michigan by zero point one zero mil, which is equal to ten cents per one thousand dollars of taxable value of all such property to be collected for a period of four years beginning two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-seven inclusive for the purposes of operating and sustaining a full-time local emergency management department to coordinate and integrate all activities necessary to build, sustain and improve the capability to mitigate against, prepare for, respond to and recover from threatened or actual natural disasters, acts of terrorism or other man-made disasters in the County of Ross Common, thereby raising in the first year an estimated one hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I believe, I believe we had a typo on line one. I'm sorry, I just caught this. It says, whereas Ross Common County Board of Commissioners, its duty to protect, it should be as a duty, I believe, I did this.
We changed it to Commissioner's duty is to protect. We just.
So that did get changed, but it's not on my copy here. That's why it's.
Correct. She announced it before we did motions and resolutions.
Killing me here.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
At least I was paying attention.
Told you when they operated on your hip, they made one leg shorter.
Roll call, please.
Wolfson.
Oh.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Committee reports. When giving our committee reports, it would be wonderful if each of us gives a brief explanation on the topics that were discussed within our committees. This helps keep the public informed along with other commissioners what has been happening. Commissioner Ostergrun, would you like to start?
I've got a couple. I was at the emergency management meeting, LEPC meeting on June eighteenth. And the HMPD grant was approved for one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Vanessa obtained that grant for us. She always does a good job of getting grants. Bylaws, there were no changes from last year. We voted to keep them the same. I moved them the same for this year and seconded that motion and everyone voted in the affirmative. No new to business. Reports were, uh, everyone that's reported on and the solar energy project that I've been working on was discussed and the the importance and how much revenue that's gonna bring into the county. And the Higgins, Higgins Township, we got into that and we're everybody was very enthused about that. I felt Jody was there, so I think everybody's pretty pumped about it. In fact, she had I didn't do anything to report and she goes, oh, yes, I do. So, so I reported on that. And I talked about the millage increase on the ballot for emergency planning that we just voted on. Seventy-five hundred dollar grant from the Higgins Lake Foundation for the Marine Patrol on Higgins Lake was given to us by the Higgins Lake Foundation. That's gonna allow our Sheriff's Department to monitor Higgins Lake this summer. And the money will be there for them to do that. The EMS Department's gonna be participating in MASH casualty, et cetera. I can't, I didn't write down where it was at, but, but Vanessa reported on that. Jody, do you recall where that's gonna be held at?
Cam Grantley.
Okay, there goes Cam Grantley. Thanks, Jody. No director or deputy director right now for nine one one. So the staff is very short staff. And we need more people part-time and full-time. And I'd like to announce right now for everybody out there that's listening to this, that it pays sixteen dollars an hour. I mean, that's not a lot. But we, we need to have people who can do the job and will stay on the job. Benefits also come with the job, and I think that that's a big, big bonus. So even though you're only paid sixteen dollars an hour to get the benefits for anyone out there listening in Zoom land, I think that that would be very beneficial. And there's gonna be six full-time positions are available now and two part-time. Vanessa's gonna do some training for grant writing and updating for any of the members that need help for obtaining grants in, in, in Ross Common County. And there's a problem with a no parking area on County Road one hundred around South Higgins Lake State Park. And it's called the traffic control order. So what, what has been happening every summer is the boats get all jammed up inside the state park. People have been parking their cars out on County Road one ten and that's illegal. So they're gonna be keeping an eye on that. The, the other report that I have. Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority Meeting, my favorite group of folks. Brian Martinez reported that they're in the process of hiring a lot of new people. My Choice Program is moving forward. Dr. Washington finished a book and is just publishing another book. Dashboard reports are getting better for the folks who want to look at what's going on. Al Cambridge remarked that he is happy with the improvements in the dashboard reports, and I take a lot of solace in what Al has to say because he knows this subject very, very well. Laura Argyle, the CFO, reported that Medicaid is tracking as expected overspending. A lot of like this tracking as expected and they're overspending. Okay, overspending is a one point three million year deficit. Lots of concerning issues. They're gonna have a formalized cost containment plan. The biggest challenge is understanding what financing for programs is going to be. Two to five million dollar deficit is expected. We, they need to be as frugal as possible in moving forward. And we want to start spending within our budget. We discussed the monitoring assignments, continuing of executive functions and purchasing procurement policy. That's, uh, that's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be some things coming up with that because of everybody, I think everybody knows that they're going through some financial issues there of northern community mental health. HR assignment, Corinne Conley, she discussed the human resources challenges that they're having with people. Getting good people on board, keeping them on board. Club Cadillac was discussed, the interaction between the community and Club Cadillac. I guess there's quite a few of these little clubs around and they and they help out with the mental health issues. Jody probably knows a little bit. She wasn't at that meeting, but I know she knows a little bit about it. And it's, they're they're basically for the mental, mental health stuff. Well, you've attended the meeting, so you know. And Clubhouse helps with meals, wellness programs, choir, letter writing. Good opportunity for local businesses to get involved, recreational social program. And one of the comments that, that, that was made that I thought was kind of profound, and I thought I'd pass this on, and this was made, and is that you can't measure things that haven't occurred. So their emphasis was on making some things happen so they can start measuring them. Thank you. That's the end of my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Melbourne.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Last, the last three months, we've had kind of the traveling road show for the COA, Mission Indonesia. On to St. Helen, we've gone to Holton Lake, we've gone to Ross Common. If you haven't had a chance to get to any of the three centers, I certainly recommend it. The food is really good. The camaraderie is really cool. And a couple of weeks ago, Bruce Finley and I started a tradition that we're gonna raise the flag at Flag Day every year at one of the centers, and I would recommend, I'll bring this up next year if we're still around, is the same thing. As far as NMCAA, Action ECU Traverse City, good meeting. I've asked Shannon Phelps and Carrie Bachman to make a presentation here in front of the commissioners. It's time that would be convenient for them to give us an update. And I just hope they'll be here in the next couple of months. Thank you, Mayor Chair.
Commissioner Russo.
I'll have just personnel. That's it. Thank you.
Attended the agenda meeting on Thursday, June twentieth, attended the Holton Lake Improvement Board meeting, June thirteenth. During this meeting, we were presented with the areas of Holton Lake that were going to receive treatments for the invasive species. Currently, it's under one percent of the lake that's being treated, approximately one hundred and eighty-seven acres. And that, I believe, was actually done this past Monday. There was a discussion and concerns regarding the boat wash stations and the Holton Lake Improvement Board will be looking into those concerns. We were given a revised PFOS PFAS levels of the fish in Holton Lake. They were retested because bile from the fish was giving false readings when they did the initial test, so they performed a new one that could distinguish between those. And you can find that information on the Holton Lake Improvement Board website. I had personnel meeting updates, meetings in regard to the Holton Lake SAD concerns, several conversations regarding the Advisory Board for Holton Lake. And when their first meeting may start, an email will be going out to everyone on the Holton Lake Advisory Board with an update by the end of this week for Vice Chair and myself. Animal Control Shelter Meeting on June twentieth, we discussed several grants that they have and will be receiving for the spay and neuter program. And then, of course, we all had to go and see all the adorable animals that are up for adoption. And there's a really cute kitty that's probably gonna lose one of its legs, but he was adorable. Commissioner Wolfson.
I contacted Richfield Township and Higgins Township and some residents about setting up the advisory board for the St. Helen SAD Materials Management Program. I've made contact with Mike Logan from Michigan Consulting and Environmental. He's gonna get me some information. Also, Jody handed me a note from another outfit responding to drafting our plan, so I'll be looking at those. Had a meeting with hazardous waste. They had a good spring draw this year for their program. And they are no longer gonna have their meetings here in this building. They are gonna be in the evening over at, I believe it's Savo River Complex. And they also were concerned about their future, and I indicated that I thought they were gonna be an integral part in our materials management planning. So that's it.
Thank you. Or comment, Commissioner Ostergrun.
I don't have any.
Commissioner Melbourne.
Was I supposed to?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just usually you do, so thank you. Kind of surprised everybody.
Killing me here. I just, I feel a remiss if I wouldn't we say this. When I hear comments like be forewarned, I look at them as veiled comments.
Sorry.
Veiled threats. I, I, I just take it that way. It's all good as a veiled threat. I know that's how you talk. But it gets my shankle. I think it's contentious and it brings doesn't bring congeniality to the board. Just my thoughts. I hope you can hear me because my voice is kinda shot. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from you afterwards, what I said.
Again, I don't wanna go back and forth, but you said be forewarned. I took it as a veiled threat.
You guys can.
I just, yeah, thank you.
There was a letter that Commissioner Melbourne had worked on, including myself in regards to a letter, letter to the editor regarding Emory Road. I'm not sure or not if it was gonna make it into the paper this week or next week, but it just shows our support in what they're trying to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Men up, Craig.
Eric didn't say anything. Oh, it's green.
It's green.
You turned it on?
I did not.
They left it on.
They might have left it on.
It's ready for you.
You never told me to push the button to turn it green. And speak, speak and dead mic. Craig Cotterman, Holton Lake. Holton Lake, we have these new lake level gauges. I think Shepkey Construction put them in, one on East Bay and one in by the, by the dam itself. They're not, they're not quite as elaborate as the USGS. USGS, you can go back, what, thirty, thirty-eight, forty years. It's, you see what happened that day and get the averages of the lake level. The ones, the new ones we have, you can't interact with it. And I've yet to see the data from the East Bay by Harvey Marina installed a lake level gauge there. And I was on the website yesterday and I didn't see on Shep's, Shepkey's website that data or that, that site. When we talk about lake level increases, this, these wind-driven tides as the lake sloshes back and forth, basically, we're seeing a six-inch discrepancy the dam on the USGS site. Wind blows out of the west real hard. That'll actually drop that site six inches. We've seen that already. The effect in East Bay where I live may be more than that. That's why it'd be nice to see the data on this East Bay site. Again, banking water, talking about lake level increases. You know, if you bank a foot of water and we get a six-inch wind-driven tide, all of a sudden I'm at flood stage again, and that's eighteen inches above legal level is flood stage. So again, if these, these sites could be working or perhaps as interactive as the USGS site would be, it'd be nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Vanessa Varno, Rust common County Emergency Management Director. In conjunction with Commissioner Ostergaard's report, I wanted to let you all know that the Mass Casualty Exercise was yesterday at Camp Grayling, and we did have responders from Rust common County show up. The exercise went very well. And the second part of that exercise is today with our EOC support activation this afternoon. So thank you all for your support of that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No one answered? With no further public comment, we will adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Next meeting for Budget and Finance will be at 11 o'clock.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh. Yes. Roll call, please. Ostergaard. Spencer, here.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please. Over. Approving the agenda. Spencer. Yes.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Public comment. Is there any public comment? Yeah. New business, Rust common County 2024 Budget Review.
Get it, Andy.
Here. I want that back. Yes, it's on your laptop, but I want that back.
It's going to be up there.
That's. That's it. So while Andy works around all the stuff that I make him work around over there, this is on your laptop, too, in case you want to follow along that way, because the numbers are small. Poor Commissioner Wilson. One of the things that I will tell you is that our 2023 audit is completed. The Chair and the Vice Chair, myself, Clerk ROD, Treasurer and Sheriff will be sitting in on the exit interview tomorrow morning at nine with Tyler, our CPA, to review his findings and all those good things. And then he will be here the first meeting of July to give a formal presentation to the full Board of Commissioners. I don't have all the information from that because I like to wait and be surprised along with everybody else. That being said, there may be some of this in regards to not expenses, but in regards to revenues that were credited to 2024 that may need to be moved back, but it'd only be about $100,000 from the general fund. So when I pull, when I pull a budget, and Rebecca's not in here, she would help you with this. So when I pull a budget for you, if I pull a budget mid-month, I do not have any of the monetary amounts that have come in electronically. The Treasurer's Office inputs those in at the end of every month into the accounting program, into the general ledger for me. So there's always a small discrepancy between those. So I do my best to account for that, kind of roll back to May of that year. But I do like to make sure you have a up-to-date snapshot of expenses especially. So the expenses are already to the date because those are instantaneous in the accounting software. Revenues are always a little bit behind. Next slide, please. Okay, there's the little numbers. See why I get it? Okay. So overall, our revenues are, continue to lag behind. Again, that is mainly due to the fact, when you look at the general fund, which is your lowest, because we're roughly about 49% of the budget year at this point. So, so as you look at these and you look at to date, we do not start collecting those tax revenues for the general fund, for our general property tax for another couple of months. And then you will actually see it slide right back up again as it goes. Everybody else looks pretty good. Your road commission obviously has already has already had their processes of where things come in. All of our special millages have already been collected. You could see those 207 for the Sheriff's Millage, 261 for the E911 Fund has been collected in there. The last year's spongy mouth, we actually start with those at the beginning of the year. So those portions, those portions of allocations are already present in what you see. That's on, that's on all of these screens. There are areas that you'll see zeros, and that is simply because I have not allocated money from the general fund to those yet. I like to wait till about six months because if I think I'm going to need more at that point, I'm going to have to come to the board with that information before I make the first appropriation from it. So, next slide. You're getting used to this trend, I think, by now in the spreadsheets. Where you see the, the largest amount of money coming in are in the general fund. And then obviously, our road commission, which is a flow-through fund, is equally as large as ours. You go down a little bit more and you'll, you'll get into Michigan Interstate Defense. You get into the Childcare Fund as those come through, and the sheriffs and 911. Next slide. Fund expenses to date. Again, we're looking at roughly a 49 percentile. So almost halfway through the budget year, which runs January 1 through December 31st. Overall, we're doing pretty well. You'll know that the animal shelter donations is, is higher. But that being said, they're also well above what they budgeted for donations this year. They have had several grants come into them for spay and neuter programs, specifically a BISL grant, and that's where those flow through, is through the shelter donation programs as well. One of the other areas, specialty courts is always a little bit higher on their expenses at this point in time. They've started to get a little bit busier as the courts are busy. The law library. So I will be reaching out to the court administrator, the circuit court administrator, to discuss where we are at with the law library this week. Obviously, they are very close to being over budget. So we're going to have to figure something out for that. So I will be communicating with the Chair and the Vice Chair on that as we go along. Commission on Aging shows almost 100%, and that's because we have given them all of the money that we take in for the village money to them. So you'll see that stay at right around that 99 percentile as we go. Bungy moss suppression is higher, and that is because we've sprayed already this year. So that large one's gone out. Next slide is going to be just another snapshot on a graph of our overall expenses. Same thing, largest is your general fund, your road commission. Interstate Defense comes into play. You'll see the Childcare Fund is actually a little bit lower than we anticipate, which is a great thing as it moves through. Okay. Next slide is going to be payroll expenses to date. So overall, I'm still looking pretty healthy. We, for the general fund, Sheriff Road Patrol Fund, we will start to see those overtime hours come into play in the next two months for that. But we are definitely trending below where we had anticipated for that. We've had some staff turnover, which has left openings. So, so that's kind of a bonus as far as where we are in the general fund. Sheriff Road Patrol, obviously, they are slightly lower than we anticipated. A lot of that is due to the low staffing. They do have one cadet that is starting now. Under Sheriff is nodding yes, and are searching, searching for their second cadet for the season. So hopefully, that program will bring us some relief. One of the other areas, Veterans Affairs tends to be a little bit higher. They have three full-time employees. They're, they're well within their budget. They just three full-time employees that work year-round. So that is another area that you'll, you'll tend to see some, some differences for. The Automation Fund and Concealed Pistol. Once we actually get an idea how much time we allocate back to that, those are actually transfers into the general fund. That'll be done through journal entries later on for that. So the next slide is just the same, same graphics, just showing you how much of our payroll is spent in each of the different, each of the different funds. Our benefit cost to date is going to be on the next slide. This actually, so we are actually in June, but this budget, I told you, expenses are real time. We've actually paid seven months, not six months, of benefit premiums. So this actually reflects seven months. So we are, we are really close to that. The only area that, that is a concern to me is we've had a couple of changes when we hire new people into the department. So ideally, if we had somebody that we anticipated to only be them and somebody else, and then they hire in with a full family, we're going to see a small increase in premiums. Traditionally, it offsets at the end of every year because you lose somebody that has, retires that had a family or their kid goes to college. So those traditionally will, will make up at the end of the year. The benefit cost actually does include the HRA account that we have talked about. So just keep that in mind. It's not just the premiums, it's, it's actually the HRA. On the next slide, you will see where the distribution of funds for benefit expenses go, our payroll costs. The most people come out of the general fund for money. Sheriff Road Patrol and then dispatch would be, would be your next two, two larger areas. So the next slide has the retirement costs to date. Again, we are trending really well with our retirement costs. As we have had people retire or we have people leave employment, we budget for the defined contribution at 5%, which is the highest that you can put in. And of course, we always recommend to every new employee that they put in the full 5% into the defined contribution. But not everybody listens to Noel, which they should, we all know that. But that being said, that can make a difference in what we put into it as well. We do have our actuarial report that just came in yesterday from MERS, and that tells us with our defined pension where we sit for our total funding to date. We were at 76% last year. We will be at 75% next year. The largest reason for that change is that we did have a few people retire in the sheriff's unions. And those retirees, now you have less people putting in at a higher rate. So that's the biggest income, but worse. So for the most part, we will be flat on that and not see a huge increase in what we have to put in next year. Same graph. Your retirement is, on the next sheet, it's, general fund is your largest, largest employees, batch of employees from the general fund, and then your Sheriff Road Patrol as well. Your next one is my favorite slide, just because it's actually good news. And I started off this whole meeting thing with really bad news. So one of the pieces of information that I did get was where our estimated, actually, I should say, where our audited beginning fund balance for 2024 is. Obviously, that's our ending 2023 fund balance. So when we started 2023, we were just below $1.2 million for a fund balance. We will be ending 2023, starting 2024 with $1,544, $573, which means that we did have an increase of about 2% in our fund balance. It puts us right at about 14.5% for the start of 2024. A lot of that is attributed to the fact we just didn't, we didn't have the same amount of expenses in benefits and retirement that we had originally anticipated. And we did have low employee counts. So that made a big difference in our general fund for that purposes. Looking at where we would potentially end up for revenues and expenses for 2024, as long as things stay on keel, and obviously, you can tell overall expenditures are, are lower, we have a good chance of coming in at an 18% fund balance, which I know is kind of the ultimate goal of this board. So keeping that in mind, it's a great thing, especially when we're looking at a 20% increase in our benefit costs. So kind of put A and B together as those go along. Overall, on the last slide, I, kind of a recap of everything that I've said. The, the revenue collections are on track with 2023. The percentage there we are for the general fund as far as collections for current taxes is within 0.01% of 2023 and 2022. We did find out that we have limited, limited federal grant funds coming in, especially from USDA, which will impact our general fund stream by about 150,000. We just have some, some grants that we have utilized, specifically vehicles, for several years that we will not be able to offset with. They just have not received the funding for rural, rural development, basically. We are below the expected 49.73% in all of our funds for expenses. One of the big things is that our HRA expenses are roughly 10% higher than budgeted. I did mention that the trend right now, they said, was 8.7%. Payroll are also slightly higher than the last report. That is due to us coming into the summertime season. We always have special events for our law enforcement. So you'll see their numbers come up a little bit more as you have to, to do that kind of mandatory overtime for coverages as well. The highest payrolls are always in the general fund, front of the court, and then the Childcare Fund as well. With our benefit expenses, like I said, it reflects a total of seven versus six months of billing. So it is a little bit higher than that 49.73 in the general fund and the front of the court. And then our retirement contributions do continue to remain below budget. That turnover in all funds has reduced contribution amounts that were budgeted at a 5% average. And then traditionally, your defined contribution, it equates to almost 18% of the salary. But they give us a specific number that has to be collected per fund every year. So one of the things that helps with your defined benefit, we have a vesting portion. And if you leave employment before you're vested, all of the funds that the county put in go back into the pot. So if you've got somebody that was supposed to be here eight years to be vested, and they leave at year seven, all of that money, 18% match that we've been putting in, goes towards offsetting the unfunded liability. Not that we want people to leave after that long, but it's the only positive I could come up with when we have turnover in those departments. Questions?
Sure.
Thanks.
When we look at fund expenses to date.
Yes.
Example, Commission on Aging, 99.89%. Is that, that's not a reflection of what they've spent? That's just a reflection of money moved to their account?
That is correct. So for them specifically, we collect the village money. That is our village money, county village money that you contract with them. And so that is us turning over that contracted amount of money to them. So we have given them all the money they get from us this year. Yeah.
Thank you.
My name's Marvin. Comment, I forgot to cover this in the committee report, but it's part of the budgeting process, so it's a good time to talk about it, I guess. At the C management meeting, I talked with Sheriff Stern about the splitting out. Jody was there also. I think we all talked together about splitting out public safety and coming up with a separate village. And he said, well, he's not in favor of this, this time. So I said, okay, I'll drop it. It's no problem at all. I just wanted to everybody to know that, that it's not anything that I'm going to be pursuing going forward. Just trying to throw some ideas out there to help us in the, in the, everybody takes it with a net, baby.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very nice report, Jody.
And not only your office, but the entire staff and all the employees of the county. It's, it's very heartfelt. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jody, for doing all of that. Thank you, Jody, for doing all of that. Motion. But by that for hours? Motions and resolutions? We have none. Um, public comment? With no public comment, this meeting would be adjourned. All in favor, say aye. No.